If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. I could ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence. Then we'll ask Ms. Sains to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
May we pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the room?
Yes.
Mrs. Inger Early, Mr. Lesby.
Here.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Tingle Sains.
Here.
Mr. Shaw Walter.
Here.
Mr. Stone. Mr. Tackett. Mrs. Tackett.
We're both here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Mr. Stone is on his way. He was sat up at work, but he's getting here as quickly as he can. And I knew that Ms. Early was under the weather for this evening. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of July 22nd, if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or adjustments.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Hand seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Also in your package, you should have received the last copy of our check register. If you could indicate if you've received that register, thank you. Captain, would you see what the public comment sheet might have on it outside? We've got a great crowd here tonight, and we're gonna have some very fun ceremonial stuff in just a few minutes. But if you'll bear with us, there's just a couple of things at the front of the meeting that we need to do procedurally. And then we'll get to the reason that many of you are here with us tonight. If I could first call to the podium Kyle Fannin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm just here to thank someone. And I have a record, a letter we would like as a church to submit into the record. And so I wanted to read it and then give it to you for your approval. A thank you, our church family began about six months ago to make preparations for our next stage of facility growth. We plan three to five years ahead of time. We called GMWSS about the plans of the sewer going south in the county. Your staff and his staff, Chase Osevatos, was fantastic to work with. Just really a joy. I didn't know he was gonna be here tonight, so I'm trying not to embarrass him. They asked us to come in and to meet with them. We were able to do that last Tuesday. Chase, an elite engineer, took 30 minutes with us on the staff at the church, explained how it will benefit and impact us, how it will help the community at large, and how it will help our aquifer, which we as a church in that side of the county are very well aware of. Leaving the meeting, we thought as a staff how professional GMWSS was, how grateful I was that the city council and the mayor saw the importance of connecting to the sewer, to those high-use facilities down on the south side of the county. Because I know it's a reach for the city to do that. It's not in the city limits, and so we appreciate it. Y'all didn't have to do so, but I believe you made a prudent choice for the immediate rescue of the watershed and for a promising financial windfall for the city over the long haul. King Solomon wrote in Proverbs 27 in verse 2, and I'm a pastor, so you know I'm gonna use it. "Let another man praise thee and not thy own mouth, a stranger and not thy own lips." And so I wanted to come and praise the city council and the mayor and say thank you, but also to Chase and his staff for their professionalism and the forethought that the city has shown in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Put this in the record. Thank you.
That's awesome.
It was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard King.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Generally don't say much when I come to meetings and stuff, but every once in a while, as I've kind of followed this discussion with the increase of water rates, understand the rationale behind it as far as with the infrastructure and aging infrastructure in Georgetown. And if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be some incremental increases in the next five years, which is understandable. But I would like to suggest and encourage the city council to begin a discussion this year about implementing impact fees with developers and builders in the community. It came from a community that as much as the city council tried to manage to grow, it was like drinking water out of a fire hose, which is very healthy for the community. But once again, there's a tipping point where you can almost overdevelop too quickly if you don't have the infrastructure to sustain it. And so in light of the fact that when the bypass, new bypass is completed, that area will probably go under development and the aging infrastructure here in the community, I think it's worthy of a discussion. I would hope that at least the city council would consider that this year, talking about helping, encouraging the developers and the builders to help shoulder the load for new streets, sewers, all the things that go into that to make all that development happen, and then reinvesting that money into the aging infrastructure here in Georgetown. And so that's really all I had to say, and so I appreciate your time. But you know, somebody's gotta pay the bill, and I think you all understand that, and we understand that. But if the developers and builders can help shoulder that, the cost of that, ultimately, I think the city council will be able to manage that growth and development, and you won't have to, in a few years, start looking at some additional sources of income by way of taxes. And that's what I encountered back home, and so it's not always a popular subject. But it's gonna be a great challenge to you, and you're not gonna be very popular with the developers and builders. But I think, once again, that this community is in, projected to continually grow in the next five to 10 years, I think would be prudent at least for the city council to consider that possibility. So thanks for hearing me out, and appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
And last on the public sign-in sheet is Ms. Ashley Nunn. She may be outside. Ashley, your turn.
Hi, Dad. Can't hear well out there. Good evening, council. Is it, do I need to go through what I put on the application and kind of get such a...
We've got the application.
So basically, Slancha Public House has hosted the after-party for the Finley 5K for the past couple of years. And we also sponsor it, but sponsor the 5K. But we are running out of space, and so this year for the Finley 5K after-party, the 5K itself ends around 7 o'clock. I was looking for Chrissy. It ends around 7 o'clock, and then the streets on the main street opens back up around that time when it ends. So what we are thinking or asking is if we could keep the street closed in a smaller section for a longer period of time. So it would be the east side of Mulberry Street, so through-traffic could still come down Mulberry Street, and then there would be no through-traffic starting around Chamber, so people could still get through that way. And then, of course, the cars and things for the houses could still get into their driveways. So we were asking for 7 to 10. We'd have live music outside, which we always do for the event. And we would start cleaning it up at 10 and be finished at 10:30 is what we were thinking, so.
This is the limited street closure that we've used before, where we maintain some of the streets are open as to not completely shut down traffic.
Yeah. Mayor, if your staff and the police department are in support of that, from my perspective, I'll make a motion for approval.
Seconded, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Ashley? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now for the main event. Under Mayor's comments, we have the opportunity tonight to recognize a number of promotions in our police and fire department. It's one of the things that council enjoys the most, folks get promoted, and their family members or others can help pin new badges and bars on them. So I'll start with the fire department promotions, since they happen just to be on the agenda first. Chief Bear, I'll turn this over to you for this part of the ceremony.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of council. This is a very important day, and thank you for taking the time out to acknowledge the accomplishment of our newly promoted officers. They have been selected through a rigorous process inclusive of a written examination, practical examination, and an oral interview. Our first officer to be promoted to the rank of captain. We've got a full house here.
Yes, we do.
I'm glad the fire marshal's not here tonight. Think we'll be okay. We've got two exits.
I have no idea right now.
Is Captain David Skinner. David?
Congratulations.
David comes with 16 years of service. He's promoted to the rank of captain on August 1st, 2019, and is assigned to Engine Company 3 on platoon number 2. And we will get your badge up here, Donna can make her way.
He's so cold. He couldn't see her.
So feeling fans I have troubles with.
There you go.
And to pin the badge.
Don't stick him.
Definitely don't stick him, man.
For you and the audience, this is when we hope we don't see blood.
Well, they're trained, so we're okay. Good job. Good job.
Our second promotion is Battalion Chief Chad Smith. Chad has served 15 years with the division, promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief on August 1st, 2019. And Chad serves as the shift commander on platoon number 1.
And Chad, why don't you come up in front where we can just have you fully embarrassed?
There you go. Wait till she sticks you. There you go. Great job.
Mayor, if you would, and the council members, if you'd allow me a little latitude, I have my father here with me today, as well as my wife. I've asked my dad to come and to participate in a pending ceremony. And if you would, Dad, if you would pin the badge on me, I would certainly appreciate it along with my wife and list.
So our third promotion tonight is Chief Bear. Chief, good to have your father here and your wife.
He gonna finish it up.
And that concludes for the Division of Fire.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
We have some police department promotions as well. What's remarkable about this for the council and the audience, it's the continued growth and change of the department. We have officers retire. We have outstanding younger officers being able to be promoted into these positions, and it's a very healthy process, we believe. Would like to ask Captain Mather if he'll handle this for the police department. Chief Bossy is out of town, and I just got a, kind of a garbled phone call from Assistant Chief Swanigan. He had an emergency tooth extraction this afternoon. He's still sedated and sounded like he was drooling, and made his apologies for not being here. So Captain, we'll let you handle that.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you much for having us here. Sorry for the rushed format that we'll use, but we'll muddle through as best we can. We have four people that were very happy to present for their promotions this evening. We'll start with our two new lieutenants, which will be Josh Nash and Nicholas Lobo. They're gonna be pinned by their family. Oh, okay. I thought they were all lined up. I'm sorry. Take just a second. We got some collar brass and the badges. They're gonna take care of all of that for us.
That's all. This is not just badges. There's...
There you go.
I wanna do it, too.
That's better.
We know who's in charge.
There you go. Hi, dear. Hi. There you go. There's no fear. It just stops. Yay.
Okay. We have, and now we have two patrolmen that have made sergeant, and that will be Mitch Lair and Officer Mike Scott, which are both now promoted to sergeant effective...
When I start getting ready, an extra 30 minutes earlier in the morning if I...
If you hadn't, yeah. Maybe.
Yeah, it's no fun, the buttons and the extra stuff.
It's no fun. Trust me.
We're not going nowhere. Let's enjoy it. It wouldn't be any different from a woman accessorizing, would it?
Exactly.
There you go. All right.
Thank you for allowing us to have this time here in front of you. It means a lot to us.
It's an honor for us. It's an honor for us.
Thank you so much.
Oh, the crowd's gone.
Why even save your family? Lieutenant Holly is here, even though he's retired.
There you go.
Thank you for being here.
Look how comfortable he looks and...
I know. Leisure. Leisure.
Got a big smile on your face and everything.
Mayor, we need promotions like this so we have a crowd every week.
Might save them to the end though.
And it's a happy crowd.
It is. It's a good crowd.
Were those kids so cute?
Oh, that little one. Finally, she got a little... It's great. It is great.
Okay, now we'll go ahead with Mayor's comments.
Stop that.
Yeah. Well, no, I can't do that. Put the best on first, and figured I'd just go with that. Wanted to make the council aware that there will be an announcement made this coming Friday at 9:30 in Courthouse Square. Governor Bevin will visit Georgetown along with the Commissioner of Department for Local Government to make a series of housing announcements. I think it's five different communities involved, and other leaders will be invited to Georgetown to be a part of the governor's ceremony. So the governor's office is handling the invitation list and the press releases. My job was to make sure council is aware. And if you'd like to, if you're in town Friday morning at 9:30, we'll have that event in Court Square. If we have inclement weather, we'll move up to the third floor of the courthouse.
Nope. It don't rain, Tom.
That's right. It doesn't rain. Also wanted, y'all may have seen some of the pictures from the float event. There were over 500 people that participated in the Elkhorn Float.
Really?
Yeah. It just, they had, Robert said they had up to an hour wait of people being able to get on the dock to get in to the creek. Not surprisingly, tourism is now talking to Robert about building a second dock so we can handle the crowds for the Elkhorn Float. So that's been a success.
Good.
So Robert's working on how he'll handle that particular request. You all had known that we were gonna, or you may have seen the markers, that we were gonna close East Main Street Extended this past Friday night, all night long. We did that. The road is completely paved now. Looks a lot better. We're nine days before school starts. The road is paved. It still has some edging work to be done and the striping to be put down.
Looking good.
As you all promised, there will be an improved East Main Street Extended in place before Creekside Elementary.
That's great.
Will the school be ready?
Well, I...
That's not our monkey.
Hey, we can get them to the school. That's all we had to do.
That is obviously above my pay grade. Also, just, I wanted to update the council about our TAP grant and why we haven't seen any progress on the TAP grant. You recall the Transportation Alternatives Program grant was for West Main Street. Originally, we looked at designing sidewalks out West Main Street. Then the council decided to take all of the Phase 1 money and actually spend it on Phase 1. And those were the beautification items that we've promised the public. The curb bumpouts to make West Main Street safer to cross. Improving the aesthetics of the bridge over the viaduct and extending the green lamppost over there, over those, and an entrance. Some kind of entrance.
Coming into Main Street.
Coming into Main, West Main Street. The reason we have not built those improvements yet is the area involved goes over the viaduct, and the viaduct is the oldest masonry structure in Scott County. So the Transportation Cabinet has been working with the Heritage Commission to determine how much repairs the viaduct needs. City has long maintained that... We understand the viaduct belongs to the city, but literally decades and decades of heavy truck traffic, 50, 70 years of heavy truck traffic over the viaduct with the weight and the vibration would have contributed to any weakness in the viaduct. So I feel pretty strongly the state has a responsibility to help us with the viaduct repairs. But we are in the position now where we've been told that with our grant proceeds, we must make some viaduct repairs before we can proceed with the pretty things that we want to build, the real visual improvements. They gave us two estimates on improvements to the viaduct. The first estimate was $500,000 to do a limited amount of work. The second estimate to fix it completely was $1 million. The grant in total is $700,000 that we intended to make appearance improvements with. We've gone back and asked them to value engineer the minimum plan, and they've come up with a cost of $300,000 of viaduct repairs being the minimum amount necessary. That would not leave us enough money to do all of the improvements that we promised and created an expectation for. So at this point, we have gone back to the Transportation Cabinet with a request that they increase the size of our TAP grant at least enough to help us with the repairs to the viaduct so that we can maintain the visual improvements that we've long promised the public. We've been working through those processes, and we weren't willing to spend the limited amount of money that we have left in the grant and underperform what we've promised. So we're taking our time, and we're seeing if we can get that grant increased and do the things that we said we'd do. We still hope to have that done as soon as possible.
Is there a deadline on when the money has to be spent?
Is there a deadline, Andrew?
Yeah, but it's not anytime soon. It's sort of a...
Moving.
As long as they know that we are actively working, and we are, they're not gonna take the money away.
And we're working with them to get some relief. We want to do the right thing and fix the viaduct, but we also want to fulfill our promises with the grant. Then the last thing under Mayor's comments is just where I've been trying to give council an awareness of things that will be coming up. And this has probably been discussed a couple of times. We knew it would be on our radar at some point. But at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is...
26th.
26th of August. We will bring first reading of a fairness ordinance. So I think Devin can provide copies of that ordinance in its draft form to each of you, but we will anticipate at our next council meeting that we will have first reading of that fairness ordinance. And that completes my Mayor's comments. Item 7 on the agenda under City Attorney is first reading of a zone change. Sponsors are Mr. Shaw Walter and Ms. Mitchell.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing a total of 2.35 acres running on McClellan Circle and Bevin's Lane opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center and adjacent to and west of Edder Wood subdivision in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from R2 to B4. Summary, 1, rezoning 2.35 acres running on McClellan Circle, the bypass, and Bevin's Lane opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center and adjacent to and west of... Lane opposite the Kroger Marketplace Shopping Center and adjacent to and west of Ederwood Subdivision in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky from R2 residential to B4 community commercial. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication, publicly introduced and read for the first time August 12th, 2019.
Thank you. That will constitute first reading and we'll anticipate second reading and roll call vote on the 26th. Item eight on your agenda under City Engineer. Eddie's been hard at work, and we have municipal orders approving street dedications in Pleasant Valley Unit 2, Section 2, and in Falls Creek Phase 1 Units 1 through 5.
Mayor, can I just make a motion for all three of those?
Well, you might make the first two since the third one is a change order and we'll want to look at it separately.
All right. I'll do those. A and B?
A and B. Thank you. Is there a second?
So do.
Thank you. If there are no questions about those two municipal orders, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C on your agenda is a municipal order approving an engineering services change order for Lanes Run Business Park. This is where we have three, I think it's a sewer change order for three companies that are in current stages of construction. Commonwealth Tool, Scariot was one, and there's a electrical company. Thank you. I'm trying to get back to it. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. We thought it was straightforward enough today when, in the staff meeting, that I did not ask Eddie to be present, to deal with a pretty straightforward change order.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded, if there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from that vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I was out to the business park today and actually just looking around, so I was out there, and it's quite impressive with all the construction going on, all the roadwork going on.
Finally.
I'm sorry. Mark it down. Put it in the minutes.
Well, no, but I even asked Eddie today, kinda sarcastically. I said, "Eddie, are we gonna be through with this this year?"
That's good.
It's unbelievable what's going on out there.
You know, rain was a little tough, but we thought that this would be through in March or April. But it's really happening now. They started paving, and you can begin to see what we're actually doing now, so thank you for mentioning that.
There you go.
Let's see. Item nine on your agenda, Stacy has a quarterly financial report.
Good evening. Just bringing you an update mainly on our main revenue categories. I think you should all have copies of this one on your desk as well as the detail. So, just looking through our five main revenue categories, starting with payroll tax collections. This is the one that when we came for the March quarter, we were running about 4% behind. So, when we did our budget amendment in June, we reduced those expectations because at the time, we were a little unsure. We ended up finishing the year just slightly ahead of where we did last year. So, our original budget was 12.8 million. We had reduced that to 12.3 because based on where we were in March, we thought that's what was gonna happen. And then May came in. It was a three pay period month. Came in a little higher than our expectations. So, we ended up about 12.7 million. So, we really weren't that far off of our original budget. So, we reduced it just in case because our auditors would prefer us to have that done in advance. But, so the good news is that that performed pretty close to our budgetary expectations and just about 100,000 higher than what we had last year. And then if you look at the next one with net profits, obviously this is our most volatile. And what you will see, we originally budgeted 3.5 million for net profits during our budget amendment in June. We reduced that estimate to 1.5 based on what we knew at that time. And so, with the collections that have come in, and then what I've gone ahead and done is, as of today, we are aware of about $1,046,000 in credit carryforwards. Basically, companies that have a credit at their return as of June 30. So, we reduce that revenue and hopefully pick it up in a future year when they show net profits. So, I've gone ahead for what is known and reduced that. So, right now, we're sitting at about 1.7 million for net profits. When the Revenue Commission completes their audit, usually somewhere between September and October, there may be additional companies that show a credit return, so that could go down a little bit from the 1.7, but the bulk of the credit we know about, and it's already accounted for in these numbers. So, we're pretty close to that. Insurance premium taxes, as expected, we knew we were going to outperform our budget here. We budgeted 2.7, and as of today, we're at about 2.9 million. So, we actually ended about 286,000 ahead of budget on that one. Property taxes, we budgeted 1.7 million, and we are at 1,786,000 as of today. And lastly, alcoholic beverage regulatory fees. You can see the completed quarters, and we ended at 1,66,000, excuse me, and we budgeted 980. So, overall, we ended pretty good, other than obviously having to make the reduction on the net profits revenue budget. The rest of them came in pretty close or above what we budgeted for our major revenues. You have just your detailed budget report, revenue and expense. Keep in mind, there's adjustments and things that will come in over the next couple of months as we get ready for our audit, so not every one of these numbers is completely final, but I wanted to let you go ahead and see that. And we originally projected in our budget that we were gonna use 13.5 million of our fund balance to balance the budget, the majority of that being due to the radio tower project and the business park project. But I think final number's still pending, but it'll probably be more like between 10 and 11 million. So...
Interesting, Stacy. When you look at the final page, the alcoholic beverage regulatory and license fees, there's some seasonal alcohol consumption patterns that are kinda funny.
People don't drink during the winter.
Every year. You can tell what month people are drinking and what month they're not. And they are, they're exactly the same pattern every year.
Football season's over, you know, they just don't drink during basketball season, I guess.
Maybe there's a...
It's really a good thing.
I don't know what to make of that, but it's interesting.
No. Yeah, it's an interesting trend.
Is this the first time we've been over a million dollars in alcohol, isn't it?
Yes. You can see...
This is the first year we've been over a million.
The ending number for last, well, no, no, last year was a million 8,000. So, last year...
Barely made. This year, yeah, it's good though.
Any questions for Stacy?
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you. Let's see. The Fire Department has a municipal order approving surplus items, and that list is in your pocket.
Make a motion, Mayor, for approval.
Thank you.
Second, Ed.
Second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Then, what time is there? 6:43?
Who's got the timer right?
And we started a couple of minutes late.
Hey, we're not finished.
I know. We still have council comments.
You know, I have notes over here.
No, I was just saying, the rest of the meeting will be determined by you guys. Todd, do you have anything tonight?
Yep. Number one, I apologize for being late. I've been at a dead run all day and so I...
We're glad you made it.
But I apologize. Second thing was, talked with Steve Stamper, lives over in the peninsula, about the ADA compliance, things around, businesses around the city that, and things that aren't in full compliance with ADA. So, wanted to bring that up. I've sent him to the City Engineer and also to P&amp;Z as well.
He is, Eddie has reported that he has met with Mr. Stamper, so I know those conversations are ongoing.
Good.
And we welcome the help with ADA compliance.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Mayor, I was just looking up. I had a good meeting with our jailer, Mr. Broyles, I guess, this past week.
Bet y'all were planting things.
We were, planning and planting things.
I knew that's what you were doing. You were planning to plant.
The good news is, he's got some labor force available.
Good.
And he's willing to work with us if, you know, on any projects that we may have. Pavilion or do parks and recreation, they've done some work there. So, anyway, I just wanted to kinda share that with you and with everyone, and maybe we can work on putting together a plan for some landscaping and at least have our portion covered, help to have some of it covered through his staff, so...
Good.
Thank you. We need to pick, we've got the labor, we've got the desire to see some flowers and color. We need to pick an area and make a demonstration.
Yeah. He said they'd be glad to eradicate some honeysuckle too, so we'll find some honeysuckle fence rows to get rid of.
Let's be thinking about it. An area that's not so large that it would overwhelm.
Yeah.
Or overwhelm them that we could show a short, short-term schedule.
Absolutely. We even talked about the cemetery behind Wendy's, you know, if we end up taking that over, that they could provide some help there, and certainly other places. We just need to talk to him and kinda get on the schedule.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it. Thanks.
Connie?
None for me, sir. For the Traffic Committee, I have a gentleman that, he lives out in the Colony, and he lives on, I think he lives on Monticello, Plymouth Court in that area of it, and Williamsburg. And he has been shooting me pictures daily of how congested the road is out there with parking on both sides of the street, especially, he sent me one with Monticello, it was completely parked, and I'll send them to you all, but completely parked on each side of the street, and asking about said fire truck maybe or may not could have gotten through there if something happened. So, I told him parking issue was an issue all over town, and maybe he measured the street, because he said Monticello and Plymouth were only 25 feet wide, and then Williamsburg is even, but it was 28 feet wide. But there's parking issues out in the Colony, and I will send you all some of the pictures that he sent me. And one or two of them he sent me, it was, it was pretty congested to get through there, so...
It's like that several places. We are working on our traffic ordinance diligently.
Okay.
In fact, the parking was the biggest one we did. It's like 18 pages long.
Yeah.
But we're working on that, but I'll definitely bring it up Monday night to Traffic Committee. But I'll mention it to Eddie tomorrow. I'll shoot him an email.
Okay, and I'll shoot you all the pictures that he...
That'd be great.
That he has sent me and give it to Eddie too, that you can take a look at it. And then the other thing, Mayor, I got a preview of the ordinance for the fairness, and it's pretty detailed. It's actually more detailed, I think, than what we had that we would look at the last time around. Is it possible that we could have the first as maybe not a first reading, but as going over the detail, the legalese that's in it and understanding that, and then maybe having the first reading at the next meeting? Because I'm sure there'll be people here that wanna speak on it, both sides of the issue, and then maybe, so maybe the next meeting, have it as an introduction, but going over the details of it and understanding what it says? Is that a possibility?
Actually, the information you have this time is very different than what you had two years ago.
Yes.
Because two years ago, we did not bring you an ordinance. This exists in ordinance form now. And actually, given that the, that we've teed it up two weeks in advance, I think two weeks of public comment and public attendance is sufficient.
That's what I thought. It might get so much into public comment, the first meeting and the second meeting would be so much public comment, that maybe actually understanding what the document said, maybe we wouldn't get to that point of understanding it, the details of what it means and what it reflects. So, I was wondering if maybe we couldn't have a meeting, whether it be a workshop or the first city council meeting, and actually go over the details of the ordinance, not so much having people commenting on what it is, but letting both sides of the issue also learn what's in it, just like us. And then the next one, have, you know, a regular first reading, second reading.
Actually, this ordinance is so remarkably straightforward, and the language is straightforward, and what we now know is our legal understanding of the ordinance and the court cases that have evolved since we last discussed it. But this ordinance is gonna be very straightforward and easy to understand. I don't see any reason in dragging that out to three meetings, so I'm gonna tend to have it on the ordinance for first reading next time. We'll take comment and discuss it and stay as long as we want.
All right. Well, it wasn't so easy for me, but I will have an attorney to help me understand it.
She does make a good point about the length of the ordinance that I, I'm glad you brought that up, because I meant, I meant to talk to all of you about that. So, we have an exist, in our current code of ordinances, we have provisions for employment, public accommodation or employment housing, and honestly, well, it was written in 1960-something, and it is so bare bones, which is why this ordinance looks so long. A lot of the other fairness ordinances, communities of past are just a couple pages.
Right.
And that's because they had a very substantial discrimination section in their ordinances as it read. So, that's why, I mean, ours doesn't, if you didn't notice, it doesn't even say fairness ordinance. Of course, we'll advertise it like that to make sure that it's clear what we're doing, but we are fully revamping our entire human rights section. So, that explains the length of it, and Karen, if you have questions about the ordinance, I'd be glad to talk to you about it anytime if you'd wanna meet, or just shoot me an email with your questions to understand it. But that's why the ordinance is so long, and that's why it's not fairness ordinance and adds, you know, those, Andrew talks about those five words. That's why it's not just as simple, here are the five words, because we really kinda revamped the entire ordinance.
Yeah, I think it has, and that's what, that's some of the details of, and I'll ask you at the first meeting, but the details of what it means for employers and what it means for employers, some of the definitions of what is gender, because gender is such as a interesting thing these days on what is gender, and maybe some clearer definitions on that, but I'll shoot you some emails.
Got it.
All right.
Mayor, can I, can I just kinda add some comments? Karen, your question kinda did come up. I was on the committee along with two other of our council members, and we kinda directed the mayor that we thought that two meetings, you know, having, having it discussed tonight or brought up tonight was, was very appropriate, and then having the first reading in a couple weeks, and then obviously having the second reading shortly thereafter. And if anybody on the council had any questions, they're welcome to meet with Devin and go over the details. We kinda did give him some direction on that issue, so I know that has been kinda discussed.
And Mayor, you tell me if I'm wrong, but the vast majority, probably 98%, what's in that ordinance is already state law. It's us simply saying, we're taking what's in the state law and we're putting it in our ordinance form, and we're amending it to add those classifications. So, I mean, we can give you all the explanation you want, but in terms of creating new law, only about 2% of it is something new, maybe even less than that.
I would agree. And I'm gonna ask Devin to shoot me what's new law then, or what, what, not new law, because what's state law versus what we're creating law.
Yeah, I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
Thank you. And in fact, I think you incorporated the direct law from, language from state law into our ordinance.
Kentucky really needs freedom.
I can say that with the work that's been done so far, I am much more comfortable about the potential impact on any business owner than I have been previously. I think our legal understandings give me much more comfort about how a business person might respond and have the freedom to respond in a way that they believe they should. Thank you. Mark? Tammy?
I just wanted to say that I visited with somebody who was very vocal about the noise ordinance in Main Street this week, and the person, we had a really good conversation, and I was told that they have seen some really positive changes, that things are a whole lot better. One of the things that, that they appreciated was the, where the food trucks and the generators were making all that noise, that that made a huge difference, and it was nice to hear. This was a person who was very vocal during, during the meetings opposed to the change in the noise ordinance, who said that they appreciated the work that had been done by businesses, so just wanted to report that.
Thank you. We rarely get that kinda thing. Anything else, Tammy?
I was sick of hearing that, so...
Anything else?
No, that's it.
If there's nothing else to come for the council, we will stand adjourned.
Racker.
Racker.